Welcome to our Tuesday, July 19th, City Council Work Session. We're glad to have everybody here and our roll call, we won't need to worry about because everyone is present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, like to ask if someone would lead us.
Hi Ken.
Please stand. I'll read the Pledge of Allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If anyone would be willing to offer an invocation or a spiritual thought or a inspirational thought.
Mayor, I will.
Thanks Art.
Dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet as a City Council, for the responsibilities that we have to serve the citizens in our community and pray that we might do our very best to fulfill that responsibility. We're grateful for the freedoms we enjoy and for the prosperity that is ours individually. We thank thee for all that thou has blessed us with and especially for thy son, in his name, the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I would like to move a little bit of this around. I think that I would like to do that so we could move this along as best we can. And I just want to give a report to start with, with item number one, the economic development. A goal that I had set personally at the beginning of my term was that I would try to meet with four businesses every month and see what we could do to encourage them to come to Santa Quinn, to set up in Santa Quinn. And I've made that a big push and it's something that I feel like I've put a lot of work into and I've drug some of you along at different meetings and it's been very positive. We have met with several businesses multiple times. And it's gotten to the point to where in order for us to really focus on what we need as a city and what would best complement us as a city and what would complement the businesses that are within this city, that I wanted to look at economic development in a little different fashion before we jump in and say, we have to have the Chamber of Commerce handle this, or we have to have an Economic Development Committee or something else. And so I've called it an economic summit. I contacted Lynn and Betsy and asked if this Thursday they would come to a meeting with us and meet with six or seven business CEOs, seven. And they've agreed to be here. It's everything from lawyers to you name it. And it's not the usual people that seem to always come up in Santa Quinn politics or this kind of a thing. And so what I really feel is I want some input and I want us to take a look at it. We may have another one. And is as we look at this, then I'll look at two other councilmen that could come and help and just see what availability and everything else. We're doing this at noon on Thursday and...
Eleven, that's what I have too.
Well, eleven through noon to one o'clock. I just kind of took the middle of the road there.
Is it eleven?
Eleven.
Okay, good.
So basically, this is an idea session and it will be the first of hopefully a couple of meetings. It's not something that we're going to hold every month. It's going to be something that I just want some good input from people that don't have to vote on something, but can sit down and we won't have a committee that are going to make decisions. It's going to be solid impact and a way for us to talk, get ideas and discussion and present some of the ideas that we have that we've been working on over the last few months. This in order to help our city. The amount of revenue that we get from the taxes that come from the businesses are like four to five times, maybe more, maybe a little less than what we get from the taxes that people pay on their property. And so if we make smart decisions and if we can put our heads in the right direction, this is going to help us big time. You know, is it the answer to everything? No, but it's a step that we need to take. And I hope we're going to see some good things of this. We'll certainly get some ideas and that's where we want to go from here. Along with that, we don't really have a lot that we can talk about with where we stand on any of our industrial area or commercial areas. We're just trying to make headway with it. Hopefully we'll be able to report on some of those things in the near future. So I think that's about it. Is there anything Jason or Norm, you guys have seen that we might want to bring up?
I think you got it covered.
Okay. The next thing, I want to switch maybe three and two around because budget, revenue, funding, even goes back into this economic development, falls in line with some of the costs and some of the things that we need to look at as a council. And it comes with the review. Did each of you get a copy of that review? And it should be like a 24-page report. Did you read it? Did you look at it? Did you enjoy that? Was this, did they just get this tonight? Great, you read all the way through that word by word. You guys are slacking.
Sitting here after, when we came out from dinner.
Oh.
So it'll be, it'll be good reading after the meeting.
Well, I'll tell you what, this is not brand new to me and it's something that we've been working on for a little bit of time. And since Rod is here with us, I really would like you to, you don't have to go through this and present the whole thing, but what I would like you to do is maybe just gives you a few thoughts on it. Now, we've worked through a lot, they'll see even as they get through the report, some of the options that we can look at. But I think overall, if you could give us just a overview of how this looks, the comparisons that you've made, and even a couple of suggestions.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for giving me a few minutes. You know, I was just looking at that picture right there and it was taken a month after I started working here. And Art still lives in the same house. Anyway, regress, but...
What year is it?
1991, April 17.
Even I wasn't living in the same house, I mean, yeah.
No, neither's Lynn. Neither's Dave. Yeah, it was a long time ago.
Yeah.
A lot of changes. To the paper, this is what I call a research paper, salary review for the law enforcement wages, not just for our city, but for across the county to compare. It's a scaled up version, expanded ver, all right, it's a mini-series version of a presentation I did a couple of years ago, maybe two and a half years ago even. It contains some history, there's a lot of history in there. Don't worry, there's a lot of pictures in there, so you don't have to read all of it. But there's a history that kind of talks about where we've been, how we got to the position that we're in now, and some potential solutions to consider to get us where we need to be. And so I know there's a lot of information, take your time, go over it. I'm sure we'll have further communications about it, further meetings about it. The only thing I would request is write the questions down and send them to me so when we do come back, I can make sure that I have an answer for you. Is that paraphrasing good enough?
Yeah.
So Mayor, if I may, can I jump in and just add, there's a, there's a pretty significant need that we have in the, in the police department that's, that's in that report and just, that's what we're bringing to you for information and then we anticipate coming back with additional information or answer questions, et cetera, at a later meeting where you can actually act on something where this is just a work session.
I just, I just want to be blunt about the whole thing. Over the past couple of years with COVID and with people that were making decisions that were stupid, when, when people decry, "defund the police" or, you know, "the law doesn't matter" or "don't even bother with persecuting criminals, prosecuting criminals", we need to look at what that does to us because we need to be aware of the need of police and the good that they do. And for some reason, that picture was painted in a terrible light. This city, I think, took some very good steps. I talked to them even while I was running for mayor, "what have you done for the police?" because I was worried about that. And, you know, there were some, some things that they did that was very positive. The one thing that is hard to look at is now we take what, what was bad news, bad reporting, blaming a police department all over as, as one bad apple has spoiled the whole bunch and add to it the cost of living that's going on, the inflation that's been thrown at us. And you have, you have policemen that are going, "why am I in this, this job even?" And it's sad because they are good people. Most of, most, 99.9% are great people and they serve because they want to serve and they want to do the kind of job we need. But the problem is, all of that has caught us up with inflation at the time and the amount of money that we are spending, and that's what this report is about. How do we do that and not lose the police that we have? How do we take care of those wages? How do we take care of everybody's wages? Because it affects us all in one way or another. And how do we do this? Because if we don't, we can find young men and send them to school and pay for their, their post-training, but in the end, all we are is a training ground for the next city that's going to come in and say, "hey, we can pay you 15% more, just come with us." We, we've not been able to safeguard ourselves and we're not even in the middle of the payments for where we stand with the rest. Rod brings up some very good points. We've asked him over the last little while, not only come up with the points, but let's see what we've got for solutions. And some of those solutions are in this report. We need that overall, but we need to look at, how do we do this and how do we answer it? How do we keep the cream of the crop? We have some very good officers, great officers we brought in from New Mexico, from other departments and everywhere else, but we've lost them to the US Marshals and to Salt Lake City and to Provo City and to Payson. And you know what? It's hard to lose. It's hard to see that turnover. That same turnover happens with our fire department. And worse yet, we're now looking at anybody that can operate a backhoe, operate equipment or knows how to work with public works, they can be snatched up and dragged to another location and, and we need to safeguard ourselves. Because if not, we've got to replace them or go, "we can't do it." The budget's set and we can amend the budget, but we've got to see how we can do that now. And we've got to apply the principles that are in there and make this a talking point because I don't ever want to hear "defund the police." I don't ever want to hear "we don't support what they do" because we do. And, and our laws mean something and I stand behind them 100%. And, and I don't think there's a person in this city that doesn't really support them. There may be the odd person here or there that goes, "yeah, we don't need them around" until they do. And they wonder why they're not there in 30 seconds. And if you make cuts so deep that we don't have somebody to send, well, that 30 seconds turns into 30 minutes or three hours. So Rod, thank you for this suggestion, report. I know we've talked about this for months, about what we can do, and it, it hasn't gone unheard. We're looking deep into the budget, we're looking at options that we have, and we will have a solution. And we will have a good solution. And the repercussions of those solutions will trickle down through the city. And so we're looking, and we're all going to have to look to the depth of that cuts and how we can handle it, especially with some of the revenues that are oncoming. And we're going to talk a little bit about inflation and how those will affect this, but I think your report is very, very important. And I would just ask if, if the council, you, you've heard this or talked to them in the past or at least a commitment to look at it, do you have any questions for Rod? Is there, is it a surprise to you? I don't think so.
Thanks Chief.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks Rod. The one thing that we did want to talk about was where do we need to look with the economic outlook that we have as a city? And that has to do with revenue and funding and I just talked about how inflation's high and there's a lot of other things that are coming on, things that were counted on as we went through the budget just a few months ago and even up until last month. And those changes have occurred and they've occurred quite rapidly. And there's a few things that should have been a trigger and, and Norm and I have been talking about this, Ben and I talked about it before he left, but Norm and I have talked about this one-on-one, and that is the change that you see with the economic boon that has happened over the last few years with building and how that can affect us. And you have a couple of slides there. One in particular is that slide with the comparisons of year-to-year with building permits.
Yeah, so I don't have a year-to-year, I apologize for that. I do have...
Oh, you have the one and it'll show the year-to-year.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's all on the one sheet here. So this is the, the building permit report, we're jumping a little bit ahead for the meeting later, but it has a play in where we're at right now. And what we're seeing is, is that, that potentially from what, what's been estimated and where we were at last year, we're potentially, just in the last two months, have dropped off about 30% compared to where we were at this last time, last year. And while some folks would say, "great, that's less building," that, that is an absolute truth, but the reality of it is, is our budget, which is a budget, it's an estimate of where we're going and what we think we're going to be able to, to both have revenue and expenditures is affected by that significantly.
I think the one thing that we have to hit with realism is some of the things that, that have been brought up and I really want to talk a little bit about tax revenue, where we can go with that. Have you guys thought about it at all in the last little while? Do you know how we stand or where, where the story actually comes about our property tax? How much of the overall bill we actually pay that goes to Santa Quinn City? Do you, do you know the numbers that are inclusive there? I think most people look at that property tax bill as that is the grand number that's going to flow to Santa Quinn City. And as much as I don't want to talk about taxes, we've either got to educate ourselves fully, educate this city fully and decide the course of action that we need to take because that can affect absolutely everything that we're looking at. The overall tax bill, as you see it right there, almost 80%, 76% of the tax bill that you get in November, that you have to pay by the end of November, goes to Nebo School District. You know, somebody old with no kids in her house, they kind of go, "why am I still paying this?" Well, because that's how the school district balances that budget. And, and the state gives them the ability to take 76% of that tax bill that you pay. If you pay $2,000, well, almost 16, 15, $1600 of that $2,000 goes to Nebo School District. That's my wife probably calling, sorry. That was a mistake. I should have turned this off some time ago. Anyway, that's better. Excuse me for that, that'll never happen again, I promise, at least for a week. Santa Quinn gets 11% of that. That's about $200 of a $2,000 tax bill. And you think to yourself, "well, that's what we give to Santa Quinn." We need to justify that number, we need to look at that number. And I'm not saying, "well, let's turn around and jack the taxes up" because I don't want to raise taxes. But I also believe, and I'm going to point to a previous administration for a while, that for nine years, the taxes have not changed. And, and nine years ago, if you paid $100 to Santa Quinn City out of that tax bill, well, this, this year, nine years later, because of that taxation process that we go to that adopts the approved tax mill levy and holds our taxes at that point, nine years after that was agreed on, we get $100. And if you look at that process, the, the mill levy has gone down and down and down and down and we have $100 out of it. And yet, over those nine years, it's been 1.5% change in cost of living that's added up to it that we've not been able to take advantage of. And now we're looking at 9% inflation over this year. And, and we go back and say, "there are some serious things that we need to do with the police, with the fire, with the public works, with the staffs around here." And we need to find, is there a solution? I would ask, you know, if anybody's listening out in the ether world on our work session meeting, hopefully you have a golden goose and you could just drop us a few eggs and that would help. But that ain't going to happen and we don't have a sugar daddy. Are we doing everything we can? Yeah, we're looking at economic development, we're looking at ways that we can bring things into the city to help offset those, but are we considering maybe we need to look at the taxes too? And, and where we stand and where it looks overall? Don't you have a couple of slides maybe that we could just share? What our losses could be and maybe even where we sit with those municipal rates in comparison to other cities and where it stands? We're, we're holding low. I just read an article today about where is the best city to live in the United States? And, and this was a Verizon study. Do you know where it is? Logan, Utah. And it has to do with businesses, it has to do with the value of the taxes that you pay. It has to do with, how far do you commute to work? The cost of things around you that add up. And Logan was one of the best. There's, there's like two or three cities from Utah in the top 10. And, and a lot of it has to do, and, and one of the things was the value of your taxes. And, and I don't really have a good explanation. I asked you what that, that was.
For which mayor?
The, the tax, the value of tax. What was that?
Compared to our overall budget or...
Oh, no, it was the, the number they assigned to it. So it was an A rating or an AAA rating or a 3A rating?
Our, our credit rating right now is a, is a double A credit rating, which is the best that a municipality of our size can possibly get. You can, there's one step higher than that mayor, that's a triple A rating.
Yeah.
But typically, that's a 50 to $100 million municipality where we're not even close to that as far as budget, annual budget goes. So the, just as a, for instance, on the, the city hall financing that we did about two years ago, we ended up with a, just, just a little bit less than 1.5% on that because of that double A credit rating as far as our interest rate on our city hall bond, which is fantastic. That's, that's, you know, you don't, you don't find much better rates than that as far as municipality is concerned.
Yeah.
So we are a double rated, double A rated municipality as far as our credit rating is concerned.
As, as one looks at what we've accomplished over the last nine years with our taxes, you can, you can say to yourself, "wow, we really won. We did this right." Because in, in effect, our taxes haven't raised at all for Santa Quinn City in nine years. And, and all we're doing is...
There, there hasn't been a tax increase for, for 12 or 13, is that right? Or are you talking about the mill?
2013.
2013 is when they, when they raised taxes last in Santa Quinn City.
Nine, nine years.
Not shown on this.
Okay.
Not shown on this chart here.
I was getting 2013 mixed up in my brain with 13 years.
So, so my, my concern right now is even if we were to say, "oh, we gotta, we gotta change the taxes," we can't do that right now. And we need to look at budget and changes and what we can do for the police, what can we do for the fire, what are some other things that are out there? What if we don't get the revenue that we had projected for the budget because of the, the costs going down with the building? And people would say exactly like you said, Norm, "well, great, we're not building." Well, that's great too. However, I want to remind you of one good thing, or one thing that happened just a week and a half ago. And that was, we lost a well. And unfortunately, because of all the other aspects and the bad karma that comes with life, we didn't have the second well running, although we had anticipated for months that it would be fixed. And all these excuses add up to no well. We had spring water flowing. And did anybody lose a drink of water where we had two wells that were down? Was there any culinary? Did somebody not be able to flush their toilet? And honestly, did most of the town not be able to wash their, to water their lawns or their gardens? No. Most of the people have no idea what went on through that weekend with two wells down and one major well, with the very first thought is, "how do we get from point A to point B?" And, and it takes money to buy a motor. It takes money to buy a pump. And to have things on hand is critical. We're talking about just if we had motors and the pumps and everything that we needed that we're just sitting down in the public work shed and we could say, "oh, we lost the Summit Creek well, go down and grab a 500-horse motor and throw it on there." Well, you know, quarter million dollars later, we can do that. And we try to keep backups. And right now, we have some backups and we, we have backups that, that are having to be fixed right now, but we're also running 100%. But yet, nobody knew that? But those are the kind of things that tax money has to take care of. The police has to have some way that we can fund them. And and our only other options, and and we're gonna talk about the budget more as we go through, the revenues more. Even as we get into the other meetings and any other time that you want to. But we've got to figure out a plan to go forward. And as much as I I said to myself and I said to even the masses, even if it was only ten people was. I don't want to raise taxes. I never did say I will never raise taxes. Only with education, with understanding and with options. Some of those options that we have to look at is, where do we tighten our belt? Which arm do we cut off? Which piece do we do without? Which change do we have to make? And those are the kind of decisions, even with the budget items that we have right now, we may have to go back and say, hey. We can't do that piece. And we will make those decisions, but we will make them so that we can. Through the education process and through. Decisions that we are all. A part of, maybe not all in agreement to, but a part of that we are. At a point that we know what we need to do and he in in able to survive through some of this. Because we have staff, we have people, we have police, fire, we have needs. And we need to know what the needs are and what the wants are and where that that comes. So I know I've beat this dead horse for a little bit and and I wanted Rod to hear this part to know. It's not been an easy solution to come to this point. But we're gonna find those solutions and whatever it takes, it it may take. If we were to say to ourselves that we we have to to raise the taxes. Well, by law, there's not a thing we can do about it this year. We cannot do a thing until next fall. We have to state our intent through all the truth and taxation that you go through well in advance, which is. Mayor, early June, that that has to be done in order for us to even apply. There are no tax monies that are available to us with changes, thoughts, or whatever you have in your mind. That would even come in before twenty twenty-four. So um, the pictures as rosy as they get painted sometime, I'm just trying to be a realist. And this may be brutal, the way that it's been said tonight, but um, please know. We have to think. We have to be a part of a solution. Okay? Lynn?
Okay, if I make a comment. As long as I've been on the council, we've always tried to be fiscally responsible and stay ahead of the game. Um, and I think we need to continue to do that. I think we need to have another budget session within the next month or so. Just like we had in January and we look at where we can tighten our belt and and make. Because that, everybody knows this, this crazy billing and economy we've had for. At minimum, it's gonna slow down. Looks like we're already seeing effects of that or crash, whatever, but we can plan for some of that. Um, and I think what we've always tried to do in the past, even with COVID, things like that, we planned for the worst. And hope for the best and it worked out well for us. And I think we need to do that here. We need to sit down as a group again in a budget meeting with our directors, with our staff. And we need to make another plan, like you said, and amend our budget to plan for the worst, even if that doesn't happen.
I agree.
I I think the real wake up call of this is maybe as you look through that report. You're gonna see where Utah County jumped up the police wages by fifteen percent. Payson somewhere the same, uh, Salt Lake City, maybe even more. And you start getting those kind of changes, you know, that's a big deal. It's a big part of your life. It's a part of your retirement that you're actually looking at. Because all of those things that we need to weigh out. And if if we just said, well, everything's rosy, we'll be okay in a little while. I want to start looking now and and thank you, Rod, for making sure that you've. Beat this a while because it's also been a a chance for us to review where we're at, what we can do and come up with some solutions. Do we have some of those solutions? I would say we're we're getting there and we're getting to a point to where we can do some things. And it's not gonna be, oh, we can just get by, you know. You're okay, Luke, or whatever it is the force does. Yeah, those aren't the droids you're looking for. We're gonna be honest and we're gonna find this solution. And uh, will it happen tonight or tomorrow? No, no, but it's gonna happen soon. And and we need to make sure we have that priority and and you're exactly right, Lynn, it's uh. Look at every aspect of this budget, see what we can do and and Rod. Uh, as as directions and and conversations have been going through, I haven't tried to jump in between when. When Norm was working with Rod and and Rod and I have had separate conversations and. We have kind of different things that we worked out in three ways at at times. But we we are looking at real solutions and those solutions are gonna extend. You know, it'll extend to every aspect that we're trying to do right now and uh, we've just inherited a lot. And I want to work through this. Let's.
So mayor, I may just add a couple of things there. We're we're in good shape. We have reserves and those types of things. How far we may have to dip into those. That's that's a question that we can obviously go through. The way that the budget is set up is is more fiscally responsible and more anticipatory. Where when the funds come in, then we we make the purchases or we do whatever we're gonna do that way. Rather than just say, okay, we've got a new budget year, bam, we're gonna go buy everything, because that's not the way that the, you know, the. The the public and the and the council understand, there's there's budget that has projected revenues and projected expenditures. Those are just projections. Those are the anticipation that we have. On the flip side of that is the revenue that actually comes in the door. And so with with what we're seeing as additional costs that have potentially come on from the police department, just in the last. Literally sixty, ninety days, even as we went through the budget process. Um, some of it's been coming for for years, but even just in the last sixty days, we've gotten more information of other. Police departments, for instance, that are that are, you know, poaching, basically, they're they're. Again, it's it's in the report, you can read that, but but again, the the. The aspect of it is, is that it it's really comes down to revenue and what we can spend, right? That that revenue that comes in the door is what we can, is what we can put towards police officers or. Raises to be able to even just get us in the middle of the pack as far as the the salaries for police officers in the in the county, not even in the state. So I I appreciate the the mayor bringing this to your attention and and obviously we want to work through and do all that we can to. To again, to be as fiscally responsible as we can and and plan the very best that we can and continue with the approach that that. You know, as stuff happens, as the the revenue comes in, then we have the ability to assign it to where the the priorities are. Happy to have a a meeting if that's what the mayor directs as far as another, you know, a a midterm budget planning session, as it were, like we did back in February. Great time to do it, in my opinion. It's just a, you know, we're we're bringing to you the the best information that we have and the most information that we have that's. As current as possible.
Okay, any questions? There's one more thing that I really want to go over and that is the ordinance for the land use tables and definitions. Have you guys had a chance to read through that information and? Do you have any questions or any concerns who wanna talk about? Now, we don't have this, this as an action. Because it has to go before the planning and zoning and last week's problem kind of gone out.
So maybe just to be clear, the plant, the public hearing and the recommendation from Planning Commission is already taking place. You can't take action on it tonight because it's not on the agenda. But the council did talk about how they wanted to to maybe take a step back and have more of a holistic discussion related to this this ordinance. So. If you're, if you're ready or based on your discussion tonight, you could have it on the next city council agenda and and adopt it. It does not need to go back to the Planning Commission now. As a reminder, there was a specific element that that you wanted to go back to the Planning Commission and have a little bit more thorough. Uh, discussion and recommendation on, and that was related to the automotive service and repair. Um, consolidating that definition into one and and the the feedback I got is to make those. Uh, make that a permitted use in in a um, the Main Street commercial area. So. That is been noticed and and is, we'll have a public hearing next Tuesday at the Planning Commission, but. Again, the purpose of tonight was just to to have you look at everything else and and hear your discussion on that and take any direction that you have for me.
Well, I I wouldn't even mind if we talk about that particular item because as I read that, I I was concerned. Why is it so different? And uh, there was a lot of. Uh, comment that we got last last meeting in regards to those. Not that I'm mixed at all with it, um, I was just confused with the ordinance. And maybe I'm slow with some things and I apologize for that, but uh. I I worry sometimes if we over legislate if we don't need to. And and yet, there are some things and reasons why this kind of work is taking place. Because of perceived approvals or. Uh, rights that are given through zoning. And and the only way that you can have some kind of a control. And I hate to use that word, control, it's it's a molding operation. How do you want your city to appear? Some cities look like gingerbread heaven when you drive into them and everything's in perfect rows and the trees are trimmed and. Santaquin's not like that. But what it is, is it's people that are in rows and trimmed and. You love to support. Some of us trimmed is round. You know, I like being in shape. Round is a shape, right? But but I I don't know, we need, we needed to to discuss this. Number one, I think what we were sending back. They're gonna meet on next week and we don't wanna move forward until that recommendation. That's the week before. Santaquin or Santaquin days. And um, that puts the next meeting that we meet. During Santaquin days and we're not gonna meet that day, right? We're gonna push it off to the seventh or.
I will not be here.
We can zoom you in if you're interested in doing that, but.
No, thank you, not that week. I won't be available that week.
Isn't the Planning Commission meeting on the ninth?
It would be, but the mayor's directed that we move towards a earlier meeting and it would just be a brief meeting to discuss any. Bills or other items that come up. This item could be on there coming from the Planning Commission next week. But the the thought was rather than trying to do it during during Orchard Days and having conflicts with. Home Run Derbies and other things that we have on there that the mayor's indicated he would prefer not to have anything that week and then just do a brief meeting. Maybe at five thirty or even six o'clock the following week on the night.
And and really, the the discussion we've had is is to address just a couple of time sensitive proposals. Specifically, not the slant use table one, but specifically the detached accessory dwelling units. And the temporary uses related to agro tourism. Those are are ones that, there's some people who are waiting on on that that. That the council may or or the mayor may want to put on an agenda to to accommodate.
So there's no meeting on the second. We're gonna meet briefly on the ninth, then we'll go back to meet regularly on the sixteenth?
That's correct. Yep, again, the the ninth meeting would just be in place of the second during Orchard Days. And it would just cover whatever minimal items that would need to be covered that are time sensitive. We may or may not have bills on there or consent agenda, it 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 just depends on what the mayor decides to put on that agenda.
Do we know what time for sure on that one or? Still deciding, okay? We can, we can set that and certainly if there's more of you that are not available, I'm sorry, you're going somewhere fun. Good for you.
I am, and I planned it around Orchard Days and council schedule, so what do you do?
Oh, that's sick.
It's okay. I'm not gonna complain, so you guys, you guys will work without me.
So mayor, going going back to the land use, does anybody have any questions, concerns, thoughts on the? The rest of the land use table that Jason could address for you tonight?
I did have one thing I noticed, especially since all the auto repair owners came up. It is putting in the storage units as not allowed in there. We do have a storage unit facility sitting there on Main Street in the zone. Would that prevent them from expanding if they want to buy some land around them and do that?
So, and and same principle applies and and this is something.
It wasn't there, so we're saying no. I'm just wondering if they if they want to buy their land next to them and expand it, would that prevent them from expanding?
Likely it would. And so that's that's the thing is is whatever is on our current code is what we go by today. And so if it's not, it's storage unit, you know, and 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 the other land use automotive repair was was the exact same principle. If it's not allowed in that zone, then then you can't expand on it. Now, they're already there. They're considered legal non-conforming uses. That was something that I forgot to do that I I will do um, this week. Is we have a chapter that is all about non-conforming uses. Really, the chapter should be called legal non-conforming uses. Because a non-conforming use is just simply not allowed. But uses that were allowed at one point, but and are still there and which aren't allowed today. Are considered legal non-conforming uses and they can continue to operate and function as they are. But when it comes to expansion and things like that, there are some, there are limitations on on being able to do that. So. Again, when preparing this ordinance, there was, there was uh, some assumptions made that if it's not on the land use table, then it would be assumed that it's not allowed. And so again, this was just meant to be a clarification. There's not meant to be any sort of substance in this. But I know that as we've had these discussions, it's been brought up that maybe there is some, some more substantive type discussions that the council wants to have and that's great. But again, I'm trying to just make our our ordinance more clear of of what is and isn't allowed. And the Planning Commission, they went through the definitions and they said, oh, we have a definition for slaughterhouses or feedlots or junkyards. They said, we probably should expressly put that in our land use table and say, we do not want those things in this particular zone. Which is along our Main Street. Other uses that that aren't on the table, which are already existing, yeah, that's that's something for the council to consider and 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 maybe. Clarify in which way you want to go. I just, again, made the assumption, since it wasn't on the table, let's put it on the table and 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 say that it's. It's not allowed because that's consistent with the way the code is today of not not even being on the table.
Well, Jason, I hope you don't think we're picking on you. We appreciate the work you've done on this with the Planning Commission. This is fantastic and it does protect us. But that one particular item, I think we all agree, we need to fix and help our existing garages. And you know, and so it's not a pick on you or anybody, anything else has been done because. We understand why some businesses shouldn't be on Main Street or expand on Main Street. If we want to keep it like the mayor said, the way we want our city to be. So, yeah, thank you for all you've done on this and. Just because we found one, I, you know, I hope you're not feeling picked on or whatever, because you've done a lot of work on this and we appreciate.
I don't even look at this ordinance as a proposal from me. The only thing that's proposed is that we clarify it. Again, I tried to stay away from anything that was substantive. I know there was that perception that it was substantive and that that, you know. I'm I'm expressly making certain uses, but again, that was just based on the assumption that it wasn't even on the land use table, so. That that's the way I, you know, I assume that it was. And if someone today walked in with that proposal. I would tell them it's not on the land use table, so it's assumed that you cannot do that. So that's it. And and throughout this process, if you want to change that, great, I I really do not care and. This is all about trying to make that code a little bit clearer, so.
That was really my question. What do we have to do if we want to have this discussion, make it conditional or something? Do we just do that in the meeting when we're discussing it or? Does that have to go back to the Planning Commission like the automotive did or?
So, yeah, if if it's, if it's something that that has a little bit more substance to it and we didn't uh, notice that particularly. Then then we probably should have the Planning Commission address that specific, particular topic. And and proposal to to change the the land use designation.
So so again.
I don't know if they want to expand or not. Okay, then I think we should send that back.
If they do, that's fine, but it's not been noticed, so it wouldn't be on next week's Planning Commission. That could be a separate item that could come whenever.
Even if we pass the ordinance, we can come back in a month and change that table, can't we?
So I I, if if I may, mayor, just for the the council and the and the public. We as staff don't have an opinion whether it needs to be automotive, no automotive, minor automotive, major automotive.
What, what Jason has done as part of his job, what you've hired him to do is he's putting something through our process. And the majority of the process, like Lynn's talking about, is mandated by the state. We, we don't care, we do care, but we don't have an opinion as to whether X, Y, or Z happens. That's for you guys in the planning commission to figure out. What, what's happening here is that we're going through a process, the mandated process. Whether we agree with it or not, whether we like it or not, whether we agree with the noticing or the, the lack of noticing as perceived or whatever. It is the process we have to go through. And guess what? It's, the process is there to help us be better.
Yeah.
And it's helping us to be better because this one item came to us and said, yep, we need to have this discussion. It's, it's helping, again, uh, uh, so I personally went, as, as your representative, I hope this is okay. I personally went to all four of those businesses to help them understand that we were going to be discussing tonight. And next week at the planning commission, what was going to be on there. They know about it.
Thank you.
No noticing, no, there was a personal visit from me in order for them to make sure that they were informed. I'm not trying to pat my back, but I'm just saying, that's something that, that I, I perceive was a problem in the beginning. And I wanted to try and overcome that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a process and the process is helping us to be better. If, if, quite frankly, if we wouldn't have had this part of the process.
It wouldn't have come up.
The judge would have come next year, five years from now or ten years from now and said, hey, we want to expand. And Jason would have had to say, I'm sorry, that's not allowed. So this is actually helping us not only to be better, but to fix a problem that was there that, quite frankly, the process bore out and helped us to understand.
Right, which is part of the purpose of the process.
Right, that's the whole purpose of the process.
And I agree with what Lynn said. Um, and the direction from the meeting two weeks ago was to send that portion back to the planning commission. And um, and also remind um, everyone, all the residents and anyone listening or who will be listening or watching this. That staff members don't vote on anything. You, you, you have a job to do and you do your job and present information. We ask questions and you're professional counsel to advise us through the process. But it's members of the planning commission and city council who vote on things. We, we are the decision makers. And if we disagree with a decision or a recommendation that the planning commission makes, then we can override that. When it, when the final outcome is a legislative act. So I appreciate all the work that's been done as well, as like Lynn said. And, and I have um, in my experience, come to have a greater appreciation for the process as well. Because that is most of the time how we hear from residents. And that is how we learn about the state requirements and laws. And um, what is and is not required and what authority the state has given us. And to, to make better decisions. That's how we make better decisions is through learning and becoming more educated ourselves. And so I think, I think that, that this process is serving, it's going to end up serving our residents well. And it will serve council members and the mayor well also because it's a learning experience and a process.
And our businesses. Again, it's, it's helping us to be better. It's helping us to.
Yeah, that's what I meant by residents, but you included that.
One thing that does need to be stated is this ordinance was already in effect. And the clarification that comes through it, if we don't describe the businesses that are allowed to be on there, somebody else comes in.
Right.
Then it's assumed, they can't come in.
Yeah.
Or you can't change. And so we're trying to make sure that things that can be done legally are done legally. And, and uh, we have covered the bases for those businesses, not made it harder for them, but do it right. So.
And I would just say, yeah, that's the whole point of this is, is ambiguity does not favor a city in, in a, in a legal process. If it's ambiguous, it's not clear, then you know, the, the applicant or the person trying to, to do something, the, the court will side with them on it. So it's, it's important that it's clear. But I, I just say one more caveat with this. And then I know in the last meeting and, and I've talked with, with some uh, about this. Is that there was a, the sentiment expressed that, you know, we want to be supportive of all business and that. I think it's, it's important for you to, to really carefully consider that because not all businesses are the same. I can promise you, there's probably some businesses that you actually don't want on your main street. And, and they're probably.
We don't want to expand on the street.
Right, and they're probably ones that you're not even thinking of. When you think of business, you think of, of, of the ones that you desire to see on Main Street. But there, I, there are certainly some businesses that probably you, you don't want to see. So those types of things are important to understand and, and think about. And, and to look through that land use table and, and carefully consider and, and carefully consider the impacts of each business. Because there might be a business that is great, but it may have a, a impact and a detriment to, to what you're wanting your main street to be. That's the other thing I would say, is if there are things that are not allowed in that zone, there's probably a reason why it was originally put on that land use table that it was not allowed. It's not just that it was, we don't like that business, let's not allow it. There probably was, was past councils have, have carefully considered that and said, this is not in, in harmony with the, the vision and the, the general plan of the city to have this type of a business there. So again, and I'm not speaking of any particular one, but, but just keep that in mind that, that uh, it's, this isn't about being business friendly. It's about shaping your city in, in a way that, that you feel is most appropriate with the right businesses in the right locations. Uh, that, that's really what zoning has created. Is there, there's a, a court case, Brett will be so proud of me, back, back in the early nineteen hundreds, the town of Euclid. Is really the, the town that created zoning because there was a court case where, I think it was a chicken processing plant wanted to locate in a residential neighborhood. And this case kind of identified that that use is not appropriate next to in a neighborhood. And so that's where zoning was born. And so um, it was county Euclid versus Amber Realty, I think was the case. So that's, that's the whole point of zoning, is to make sure you have compatible uses that are next to each other. And, and uh, and so I, I just put that out there as, as you continue to look at these things. Because hopefully this was the tip of the iceberg. Hopefully we can continue to look at our other zones and make sure that the land use tables are clear, terms are well defined. And we're not doing things that are going to get ourselves in, into a pickle or, or get ourselves into trouble that we don't want to be in. Think about those things as, as we continue through this process of updating our, our zoning ordinances.
Okay, we're about out of time and I do want to hit a couple more things. Did you have something Dave?
I'd just like to comment on the, because Jeff brought up the storage units and being as I got firsthand knowledge. He does want to expand and he's got the property to expand. For me, and I appreciate, again, everything Betsy has said and Lynn has said, that, that's great. I just want to make sure that we as a group up here are being for, informed with the best information. And, and, and then we can base our decision on that. And I never want to, and I said this before, I don't want to do anything that jeopardizes any change in any of the businesses we already have. Right? So to me, whether it be uh, the stations or Darren's storage units, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I just don't want to put any restrictions on them because they're here already.
Well, and that's a great point, but, but you need to understand that you can't uh, spot zone. Or you can't just choose the businesses that are existing that you like.
Sure.
You have to be fair across the board and not discriminate towards, towards a, a business that is the exact same use. So you might say, oh, we love our existing storage units and we love our existing automotive repair. We want to only allow them to expand. You can't do that.
That's not what we're trying to say.
We're not trying to say that either. I'm not trying to say, I'm just saying, I don't want to put any restriction on any of them that we have now.
Well, I think what Jason's trying to express is that if, if the, if the storage units are not included a, as what they currently are. Like if that's changed, then it's for the whole zone. And, and anyone else could purchase any other property on Main Street and put storage units there. And is that what we really want?
Right.
We understand that.
That's, that's what we have to ask ourselves. And am I, I, I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to single out storage units. Or, or have anybody say I'm against storage units or anti-storage units or anything like that. But I will pose a qualify, uh, or a clarifying question. My understanding is that the, the owner, the property owner of a storage unit business pays their property taxes. But we do not collect any sales tax on that business. Is that correct or incorrect?
I believe that's accurate. There's nothing there being sold that, that.
Right. There's not a sale, there's not a, a consumable good. There's not a, a service being exchanged, anything like that. So we collect the property taxes on that property, but no sales tax on that business.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
I don't believe they charge sales tax when they, they can pay their seventy-five dollars a month.
It's a month, it's a flat fee, that is, okay.
You're renting.
Any other?
Another factor to consider. And, and I, I would just say, you are the legislative body of the city. You guys are the ones who make the decision and we take your direction and we go with it. But as your staff, we will, we will give you our best uh, professional opinions to kind of help you uh, gather your thoughts and, 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 and make those, those, those decisions. With the, the best and most accurate information that we can give you. So yeah, that's really where we're at with this. And, and if you have questions, don't hesitate to call me. I'd be happy to explain why things are, 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 you know, drafted the way they are. Again, this is not necessarily a, a substantive proposal. This is more just a proposal to, to make sure that our code is clean and easy for staff and for the public to, to work together on applying.
Okay, anything else? About out of time, the, uh, let's hit those others. The upcoming regular meeting agenda items, are there a couple that we ought to discuss briefly?
Uh, you just have some minutes, the bills, a, a resolution for Utah County to just reimburse us for a camera. It's already done, we've already paid for it, it's just a matter of reimbursement. And then the fire department radios, I think Brian's memo pretty well describes that really well. And he's done a great job with getting a good deal on those. And then lastly, the, the three hundred west signage and striping implementation plan, there is no action on that. I just wanted to come back and report some of the happenings that's happening, that have happened and what will happen in the next couple of weeks. On that signing and striping from the direction that was given, let me rephrase, from the, the decision that was made by the council in December.
What did we decide on the ADU discussion and the uh, the uh, aggro change that would allow? That, that isn't on tonight.
No, those, those are, are public hearings and they're going to be on the planning commission agenda next week. Again, because of the, the situation we had with this building and the, the plumbing situation, we had to cancel that meeting. And so those were pushed to the next planning commission meeting. Uh, I'll talk with you more Mayor, I think there's, there's some things we can talk about particularly with the detached ADUs that whether or not that's actually timely or not. Uh, I think it's, it's timely, but there's also a reason to maybe pause that a little bit uh, because of some state requirement, things that we could take advantage of.
Yeah, but we can talk about that inside. The, the one issue with the agrotourism is actually one of the farmers that want to uh, find a way in which they'd be able to utilize space on their farm to sell agricultural produce and uh, even, even uh, bring business into their place. Does it, does it bring anything uh, revenue wise to Santaquin? No, because that doesn't really get taxed either, but.
It may, depending on what they bring.
Well, I guess you're right.
If you point and sell farmer's market in their own property, that would be sales, sales tax generating.
Yeah, well, anything that is would be. But uh, regular produce that they grew themselves doesn't usually fall into that category.
And then lastly Mayor, we have the, the need for an executive session to discuss real property at the end of the regular meeting.
Yeah. Okay, uh, is there any other business items we need to bring up in this meeting? We beat this horse for an hour and ten minutes and feel pretty good about it at this point. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
It's all moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call? Aye?
Aye, 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 aye.
Okay, good. It's over with.